Well, good afternoon. I'll call this meeting the Finance and Personnel Committee to Order. We have one item tonight, and that is item 191437, a resolution approving acquisition of property interests at 621 Third Street North. Sure, yeah, before we get a motion, I'd like to recognize Mayor Cabot.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief, because I guess I'm more interested about questions or other concerns that the committee and council might have. We did upload a number of items to Legistar this afternoon that I apologize weren't loaded earlier. I thought we had everything on there, but we added, I believe, a property condition report, the lease from the current billboard that's on top of the property. There might be one or two other documents. I don't have those right in front of me. But in essence, we have an opportunity, and we felt like it was important to bring it to your attention to decide whether or not the council wanted to move forward with acquiring this parcel. For those that are familiar or know about it, it's the old Mississippi Welder's Building, right at the kind of the junction of Third Street, Fourth Street, and where Second Street splits off. It's the brick building. This part of our downtown has been included in master plans for decades, and the one of the items, I know on Legistar, there was an excerpt from the downtown plan that talked about this area as being a very vital gateway into our downtown, and because of its location on, you know, heavily traveled corridors, it really represents our first impression of downtown La Crosse. And it talked about uses as, you know, welcome center, visitor center, you know, mixed uses, those kinds of things. So this part of our downtown, and why I feel, you know, strongly that the city should move forward with acquisition is because of the development that's happened kind of in and around this area, as well as the future plans. Right across the river, of course, is Riverside North and what's going on there. We've been in active discussions with Excel Energy to acquire the Excel property, which is, you know, immediately west across Second Street from this property, and as a redevelopment site, you know, possible future expansion of Riverside Park, and open space, and a linkage to the La Crosse River and riverfront. And then just, you know, that's some of the, maybe the history over the past several years. And then, obviously, most recently, the city has been working on an analysis for a possible public market, and I really believe that this property would be a part of the mix in that discussion. We do not have a specific plan, or there's not detailed uses for this property, primarily because a property like this comes on the market once in a generation, and if you're going to make a decision, you, you know, you need to act fairly quickly. So we have not had, I'm sure everyone in this room would like to have more time to be able to analyze and discuss. I mean, the fact of the matter is, it's on the market. The time is now to make that decision. Our staff and our planning department have reviewed the documents that are available. They did go look at the property. They've contracted a vendor to perform a Phase One environmental review. You do have information from their office that talks about, and they would be here today except for a planning conference that many of them are at in Eau Claire. But you do have their memo that talks about how, right now, this property is underutilized for almost a half an acre in downtown La Crosse. It generates only about $6,000 a year in annual taxes. We already talked about the fact that this is a very highly visible building on a very highly traveled corridor. It's the gateway into the fest grounds and into our downtown. And, you know, I guess the last comment that I will have is it's not going to get any less expensive than it is right now. So, or it'll never be less expensive than it is right now. So with that, I would be happy to answer questions if folks have specific questions. You know, our offer is basically the $600 and $2,000. We do have a contingency on there to perform that environmental assessment, which is a Phase One, and we've been in contact with a vendor to do that. And I guess I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor?
Thank you, Chair. So I have several questions. One of them is, I would like to hear an explanation of this loan cycle we're doing in order to acquire this property, because I'm too ignorant to understand it as it's printed. And I've visited the place yesterday, no, the day before yesterday, and I had a chat with the only occupants at this time, which is a cash loan business. And it is definitely in bad shape, and there's only two functioning rooms, actually, that are usable at this time. So I think it could be a good investment. I'd just like to know a little bit more about how the money's going to work. And I would also like to know if we have the, if we're acquiring the sign rights at the same time when we make this purchase. Thank you.
Well, I'll jump in on maybe the last question, and then I would ask Valerie to go through just kind of the source of funds, because that's, in essence, how we're paying for this. We are acquiring the, you know, basically the rights in the billboard that's on top of the property, and that lease for that sign, that kind of that agreement, it's on a year-to-year renewal at this point. So that, the next kind of cycle on that renewal, I believe expires at the end of February of 2020. And if we want to end that relationship, we've got to provide a 60-day notice. And at least from my standpoint, that's what, if we are going to move forward and acquire the property, I would recommend that we would terminate that, that lease, and remove the billboard, and remove the awnings that are advertising payday loan, and, you know, do a full assessment on the building, obviously. I mean, that is, you know, your challenge today, obviously, and I know that you take that very seriously, is the risk-reward with these types of situations. I would point out, you know, we had a similar one not that long ago with the old Buzz's Bike Shop and a building that was in very challenged condition. The city spent some dollars, and there were more than a few raised eyebrows about what the city spent on that. But we're in this for the long haul. We're not in it for a quick, you know, buck. And I would think that all in this room would agree that Buzz's Bikes turned out to be a phenomenal renovation project that has a, you know, a local business that is now, has grown into that spot, and you look for great things to come from that. So I would see this type of situation very similar. Yes, there is some risk to this. We've got to deal with, I know, a building that's, you know, has a lot of deferred maintenance, and whether or not it can be rehabbed, and whether or not it's eligible for historic tax credits, and all those things are, you know, questions that we quite frankly don't know the answer to today, but we don't have the time to gather that information before we make a decision. I think Jason included in his information that I don't see the city losing money on this. If we've got a long-term view, we, you know, this is the right move to implement our downtown plan. I would then just turn it over to Valerie to just maybe briefly go through that, kind of the funding proposal that we've got for this.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposal here is to take out a state trust fund loan for a term of five years. The current interest rate is 3.25%. In order to close on a real estate deal relatively quickly, we would advance the funds from the general fund cash. We don't have funds in any other place other than borrowing. TID 17 does not have cash to purchase the building outright, so we would expect a payback to the state trust fund loan over a five-year period. And at 3.25% interest, that interest cost is probably going to be around $97,000 over five years on that loan as well. So I think, well, state trust fund loans can turn around pretty quickly, so we can have those proceeds from that loan in about two months. I've emailed Rich Schneider at the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands, which is really the state trust fund loans, and they provide the resolutions to us. It's pretty structured, and we've done that with housing-type loans as well. So if that answers all your questions, or if you have more on the financing piece?
So TID 17 is, I mean, how much surety do we have that that's going to provide the funds needed?
I think we're fairly confident, and in conversations with Jason and Andrea Schnick, that's, they expect the increments to keep growing in TID 17. We have the commitment already with general obligation debt regarding the parking ramp, so that's a 20-year commitment on those bonds as well. So that has to be paid out of the increment, and then this loan would have to be paid out of the increment as well, as well as any other projects that are proposed in the capital plan for TID 17. And I can't think off the top of my head what we have in there, but we do cash flow projections based on expected increment, and we're pretty conservative on those. We lay into that plan any proposed capital projects that would be looking for funding out of that within that project plan, and then this is going to be a layer on top of that. So as far as confidence, I think this isn't a gigantic loan, given the size of TID 17, but that's where the payback would come from to the state trust funds.
I would just like to say that that's what the TIDS are for, is to pay for redevelopment of our city. So I think it's a good use of the money.
Thank you. Councilmember Christians?
Yeah. In regard to the hurry up to do this, is somebody else ready to step up and buy it if we don't? But, I mean, and pay more than we're offering?
Well, we have, we have an accepted offer with the seller right now. There has been interest in the property, and we know of at least two other offers that they've received.
I was going to ask, to start with the same question, you know, with the time aspect here, and you know where I'm coming, in the broad context, Mr. Mayor, I think this was short-circuited last Thursday, and that's plenty of time for us to look at things. Believe it or not, I actually reviewed the agenda late this morning, but something was added to Legistar this afternoon. So we're operating in the dark, at least I am. And the business should not operate that way, because, you know, when we're spending $600, Valerie told me it's about $620,000, more or less, when you get the interest that's added in there. But in respect to Roger's question, somebody else has offered money for this? We think there are other offers that are out there?
I believe that is the case, at least in hearing from the, because we worked with the real estate broker to put this together. Our understanding was that there were other offers, or at least very serious interest in the property. But we have an accepted offer with what we're proposing.
I'm just going to keep going on here if I could. The material Jason put out here for us, the fourth item was a concern that whoever purchased the property might leave it, it is not the best-looking place in the world, but leave it to remain blighted. Sometimes you wonder, why would someone spend money for something for the purpose of leaving it blighted, except for a tax loss, I suppose, why they would do that? I guess, I like the broad concept of our improving the look of downtown and its work. He said with the bicycle shop on the north side, it's worked very well. I'm just, I'm not quite sure why we need to approve this. What would hurt if we wait, if we referred it to the regular council meeting next Thursday and allows the planning staff to be here, and to give us a little more information as to who might be purchasing this? We're basically spending $600-some-thousand, and we're going to get a lot of it back, and we don't know what we're spending it for. And you're not the planning department, so you're kind of on the spot here, but I'm wondering that.
Well, I guess the, I mean, the way that we have written the offer, because again, in these types of situations, we would all like more time. The reality is, we don't have the time. We're proposing, I believe it's, our contingency is for, and I just want to get the language here, so I'm getting it correctly, deals with the, our main contingency is obviously contingent on city council approval of funding for purchase no later than October 11th. So we have basically until October 11th to decide. We felt like, and that is part of our council, you know, meeting for next week, we just felt that if we were able to put together a special meeting to get an answer, we wanted to keep this thing moving along. But our action by this body is, we need to know by October 11th.
If I could, with the chair's permission, if I could continue. Again, I'm trying not to vote against it, but I'm having real trouble voting for something that I don't necessarily have all the information. If we referred this to October 10th and could get a little more detailed information on what's going on with this, including whatever was put on Legistar this afternoon, that's October 10th. That's a day before the 11th. That would allow, I mean, is that, before I jump too far ahead of the gun here, does that screw up a lot of stuff if we just move it back to October 10th?
No, I don't believe that causes us an issue. I think the, it would be helpful if there are, you know, specific questions, or if you are looking for additional information, to let us know what that is. But we have, I believe it's on Legistar now, we have all of the information that we have. Again, the condition report, the information from the DNR and others, I believe that's all on there, but we can double-check and make sure that that's all available to you. But if you have specific questions, and I'll just tell you right now, we do not have a future plan for that building. So that's a question that, if you ask us on October 10th, the answer will be the same. We don't, we don't have a specific use for that right now. It's because we have this opportunity that the seller is, that the current property owner is selling the building, that's why you're here. And because of its significance of where the property is, as well as our plans for that surrounding area, we felt like it was a, we felt like this was an opportunity that the council should weigh in on. And then I'll just say this, if we saw any red flags or major concerns, this item would not be on the agenda. It would not be before you.
Thank you. Again, I have, I haven't seen whatever, and maybe everybody else has, but I haven't seen whatever was on Legistar this afternoon. So whatever it is, I'd certainly see it by next Thursday. As a side note, I would hope there would be a, I don't know why we're buying something without a plan, but that's, I understand the broad concept, but maybe this will go nowhere. But I would simply move that we refer this to the regular council meeting without a recommendation, and at that point, the planning director and so forth, who, they, the mayor's got a lot of stuff to deal with, not just this, and could be more directive as to what's going on. So I don't know if I'll get a second or not, but I would move that we refer this without a recommendation to the October 10th meeting, and I'm not, I really am not necessarily against it. I'm just cautious about spending so much money on short notice without all the information.
Is there a second?
I would second that, yeah.
So the motion is to refer to October 10th. That's the recommendation that we're sending along to the regular council meeting that we're going to have in a few minutes. Discussion. Councilmember Jansen?
Mayor, would you be in a position where you'd like to maybe go over what was added to Legistar, and maybe that would answer Councilmember Happles' questions?
I can do that very briefly. I know that there were questions that were relayed this afternoon regarding the, and I can't recall what was originally put on there, so I'll just go over everything that I am aware of that's on there now. The offer to purchase, which includes basically the city's, and it's on a standard, you know, the standard commercial offer to purchase form. This was completed by our broker, along with consultation by our planning department, and that included the cash offer of $602,000. That included $5,000 of earnest money. Our main contingency was city council approval by no later than October 11th, and then we also included the environmental evaluation contingency, which gives us 45 days upon acceptance to basically do our, as much due diligence on any environmental issues. And if we, you know, if we notice anything of concern, then, you know, the seller has, will be notified, and if we can work through those issues, we will. So that was one item. The other item was the memorandum that Jason had included, and if folks were looking at that late last week, that's something that you probably were able to review. That's the two-page, kind of just discussion of the various issues and questions and information. The real estate condition report, which included, there was a couple of, so on the condition report, again, just the standard form, you're looking for that to have all no's, because you don't want to have any issues. The two issues that they did check, as far as knowing about any structural or mechanical concerns, was one on the plumbing system. So they indicated that, you know, part of the plumbing system was not functional. And then also, there was the concern about any, aware of any defects in any structure on the property. And the note was, when there is a heavy rain and high wind, water intrudes in the upper northeast corner of the building. It has been checked by Fowler &amp; Hammer, Lettiger Roofing, Buckner Mechanical, and Tranberg Roofing. So that was the condition report. There was also, I believe, information, and if this is referred, we'll double-check, but there was the, because of its proximity and its, you know, nearness to the manufactured gas plant site that Excel Energy operated for many years, there was a concern of any type of migrating contamination. And so there was a letter from the DNR, which basically explained that situation, and then also a copy of the lease agreement on the billboard. And I believe those were, and then there was also the excerpt from the City Vision Master Plan that showed that area as being kind of the gateway, welcome center part of our downtown. So I believe those were all the documents that I recall on Legistar.
If it was generating $6,000, that would suggest that it was worth about $200,000 at the most. Are we offering a lot more than we should? Or is the price, do we know what the other offers are? And if it's worth $200,000, I can't imagine how it jumped up that much.
Well, it's, you know, believe it or not, the market right now is such that the assessed value is much lower than the market value of the property. We know, and that was one of the comments from Jason, because of the fact there were other offers that were basically ready to offer asking price, that's the price of the property. I mean, that's the market prices. Yeah, the $600,000. And just for, just for a real quick example, if you remember, we just purchased, not that long ago, 11 Copeland Avenue, which was the property that was formerly owned by Wetsteins. We paid $1.2 million for that parcel, which included a billboard that was valued at $485,000. So out of that $1.2 million, roughly, you know, it was $785,000 for the lot, which would indicate a square foot price of $14.77. You know, here, if we offered the $14.77 for this parcel, the value just for the land would be about $263,000. So, you know, so we feel comfortable that we are paying what the market is asking. Again, that's up to you if you feel that that price is beyond what the city should pay or not, but I do not believe we're overpaying for this parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Trying to say it.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I will go ahead, then. I have a couple of questions. I don't like short circuits. I've never liked short circuits, and I think we need to stop all the short circuits that have been coming in here. We, as a council, really want to do our just service and job of looking at all the information, and for something to come through us this afternoon, that planning department or your office mayor should have come through a lot sooner if you had all the documents. My concern is, how, I want to ask the mayor, how long have you been interested in that property to purchase it?
Are you saying me as mayor, or the city?
Well, I know you're not going to buy it, so it's like, I'm talking about how the city, how long has the city been interested in purchasing that?
I believe when I started work as a lowly staff person back in 2003, the planning director at that time, who was Larry Kirch, had reached out to Donald Peterson to offer to buy that property because of the use, and because of the condition and what the building looked like. So the city of La Crosse, I know, has been interested in acquiring this property since at least 2003. And I will just say this about short circuits. I'm looking around the room. I bet you, just about everybody in this room has asked me to do a short circuit on their behalf, including you, Councilmember Richmond, so.
Thank you, Mayor. The price that, on January 29th, 2019, you know, some of us do all of our homework, and it was listed at $143,500. That is the exact MLS price. And then it got taken off, because there was a bidding war going on, and I know that it jumped up to, you know, 200 to 300 and whatever. Then the price, there was anonymous bid, and I know exactly who that anonymous bid was. They went $550,000. But the city said, oh my God, we don't know what in the world could happen to that building. You know, we should move, bump up that offer and make it $600-some-thousand. I think that we should have done our due diligence, and maybe just went next door to the business that is next door. They are interested in purchasing that for $550,000, and it's the credit union. Jason Gilman knew that. I had a conversation with him. I had asked him to speak with you, Mayor, on that, but I don't know if he had the time to do that or not. But, you know, we shouldn't be in bidding wars. That's not our job, and we shouldn't be in the real estate business here, but we buy and sell houses all the time. But I just don't think a public market is the place for that if the city does go forward with this. That's not the ideal place for a public market. I don't know what you're going to be doing with it, but I also have a question on, what would be the cost to pay Lamar to remove that building? That's probably going to be another $250,000, $300,000, possibly. You know, that's another cost. And as for La Crosse Street being, someday, maybe, La Crosse Street, the state might want to do an extension of the road, but they, as the state of Wisconsin, would be buying up that property from the city, most likely, or the credit union. But I just don't, I just don't approve this going on here with this bidding war that was going on this last week. And I think we need to stop doing some of the stuff that we're doing here. We definitely shouldn't be in the business of buying up property like this. You know, I can see the real need. I serve on RDA. It's going to be a fantastic area that's going to be redeveloped, but what we're doing here is wrong. And I understand, you know, Councilmember Ostrom, the condition of that building. I did go over there myself, and it's like, took a look at some of the things that were going on there that should be changed. If the roof is that bad, where was the inspection department, inspection department on that? If the roof is that bad, where was the inspection department, inspection department on that? Evidently, it wasn't as bad, because they would have probably had an order to correct. But, I'll let others speak on that. Thank you.
Could I just maybe address the couple of questions?
Go ahead.
So, regarding the termination of the billboard lease, my understanding is that, and I'm just looking at the language in the contract, at the termination of this lease, the LEC, which would be the billboard company, agrees to restore the surface of the lease premises to its original condition. So, I believe that's on their dime to remove the billboard and that structure.
A question for what the mayor just said.
On this billboard issue?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am very concerned about the billboard issue, because I have been in contact with several sources I have in the real estate industry, and have heard a few things about this particular property that really unsettle me, probably even more so than Councilmember Richmond. And I have bad vibes, one of which is the billboard, because I have heard that the five-year contract was already renewed. And I'm not going to debate that, because I see now there is something online on Legisdar that popped up just within the last couple of hours that should have been on Legisdar the day this was created, so that council could do its due diligence. And so, I would like confirmation from the billboard company that the five-year contract has not been extended, and that it is, in fact, going back to a year-to-year. I see there's a handwritten note on a letter, but I can't tell who wrote that note or what date that they wrote it. So, I think that's way too loosey-goosey to step forward on. All right. The next concern that I have, on that property condition report, that is, that language is not known. It doesn't, it is not a certain declaration that there is no contamination or problem there. It's just simply the owner saying, I have no knowledge of something. Very different. One of those points on there that's checked off is no knowledge of any above-ground or underground oil or fuel storage tanks, gas storage tanks, when there is a four-foot slab of concrete to the rear of the structure that was there to support an above-ground fuel tank back when it was NSP's property. So, there is inaccurate information on that report that cannot be taken as solid fact. It's simply a declaration, I have no knowledge of something. It doesn't mean that it's not there. All right? The next thing up, there is contamination on this site. There is nothing in front of us that specifically points a dollar amount at what the remediation costs are going to be. And furthermore, there is a wood retaining wall at least 30 feet long along the southern border of that property. And one of my other sources tells me that GECU actually owns that or built that, and that's unclear as to who's responsible for that wood retaining wall. At the southwest corner, that wall is six feet high. This is a bizarre property. It's a triangular-shaped lot. It is one of the most difficult properties to do something with when you have such an odd shape. And given, and also, in the environmental contamination, it's not just from fuel tank, but there was a, not transformers, transformers that were stored in buildings across Second Street that leached into the ground. That's also information that I've been given by reliable sources. We don't have enough information in front of us to do our proper due diligence. This could turn into a goose egg that we come, that people come back, oh, we need $50,000 for a new roof, we need $20,000 to redo the back, in the back of the building, because the homeless are getting in, the way the second egress is set up. This could go on and on and on, and we don't have any clue how deep the money pit goes on this. You know, success in real estate isn't just snapping up the good properties, it's knowing when to walk away and let the private market buy this one up. We have development standards in place, we have building codes in place, we have setbacks, we, and the, Councilmember Richmond is correct, if there is any reconfiguration necessary, those are two state highways at that intersection, it's going to fall all on the state to compensate and deal with it at that time. And, you know, if GECU wants that property for a parking lot, if the state were to ever come in and do something that negatively impacts their lot, it, that's on GECU to make that decision and make an offer and purchase that property for that purpose. It's not on the city to try to protect somebody else's investment. There's a building on there that's worth over three-quarters of a million dollars. It's a fairly new building. According to this master plan that was uploaded, the 2020 plan, that shows a redevelopment of the entire block from end to end, street to street. And with that GECU building there, I don't see the city ever going in and purchasing the GECU building to try to do a mass redevelopment there. You're going to be stuck with a little triangle that no developer's going to want to touch until you go back to the tif trough and pull out some more money as an incentive to do something. I can see it right now. They're going to say, there's no parking, there's no northbound left turn lane, there's not enough room for the setbacks, the DOT wants me to go X number of feet away in case they want to widen the street. This could be, just be a nightmare that comes back and drains money that we need to spend on park shelters and pedestrian lighting and all kinds of other priorities. We got way too much stuff in the shopping cart, and we need to put this one back on the shelf, as good-hearted and good-intentioned as the mayor is. I'm not, you know, trying to drag on him, but this is a bad real estate deal. We need to walk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, and it's on the referral, and would you have another, do you have another meeting?
I've got the referral there. And I think, Mr. Mayor, and you're in a spot here of taking questions, and you're not the staff who's doing that. I would, again, encourage the referral. I'm trying not to vote no. I could not vote yes. We should have a referral, and I'm sure every council member who's been here, we'd be perfectly capable of calling the planning office and letting them know what questions we have, so they could try to address those at the next meeting, so that would be there. I know, I suspect, speaking only for myself, I'd have a tough time explaining to constituents why we're spending more money than something was posted or listed for. And in the broad perspective, it makes sense, and the narrowest perspective, it does not. So, I very much encourage that we refer it and ask council members who have questions, including myself, to send them to the planning departments, so they can address that at our meeting next Thursday.
Time is of the essence as far as these deals are concerned, more often than not, but it does, we do have some time. If we don't have to reply to this until the 11th or whatever the mayor spelled out, this is problematic, given the timeframe that we're trying to operate under, and given the number of unanswered questions that we've got. So, I would strongly suggest that F and P would refer this to the council meeting that's directly following, and that the whole council takes the opportunity to refer this until next week's action, because we've got a lot of questions that need to be answered, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of principal questions that we need to answer as far as the investment itself is concerned. God knows, we have enough stuff on our plates right now, and this may well be a good investment for us, it may well not be, but I think that the jury is still out on that. And the more information that we have in front of us to be able to make an intelligent and informed decision, the better off we're going to be. So, I would refer, urge you to refer until next week.
Examples of the things that we could have for us to review before next week would be the contract with the sign company. Is it going to cost us anything or not? We should be able to find that out next week, and perhaps Councilmember Olson could provide the city with some of the reliable sources of which you spoke, so that they would have more information for us before next week.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on the referral? Motion to refer to the regular council meeting October 10th. Any other discussion? See none, all in favor? Opposed? And there is, the motion carries with one no vote for the referral, and that was Councilmember Ostrom. I would look for a motion to adjourn. Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.